Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing. Just a few reminders for the meeting tonight. If you wish to speak tonight, please come to the lectern. Say your name and address for the public record. And just a reminder, if you have a cellphone device, you can turn it off or put on silent so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. It'll be appreciated. You could also join this meeting remotely via Zoom as well by scheduling ahead of time. All right, we'll move into continued business. We have ZB A twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four. A petition is special permit. The applicant is Nick Fotopoulos, property located at sixteen hundred Middlesex Street. The applicant has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking a special permit approval to operate a used car dealership at sixteen hundred Middlesex Street. The subject property is located in the regional retail or zoning district. The project requires special permission approval per section twelve point six of the Lowell Zoning Ordinance and for any other relief required in the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. Is there anyone here from sixteen hundred Middlesex Street tonight? No? Okay. I know we talked about this being continued a few times already. I don't know what my colleagues think.
I think this is only been, this is the first time.
Okay.
This is a new application, even though it was before us years ago.
Okay.
There was a new application filed, and I remember last, we continued at last meeting. So, and I understand that the petitioner asked for another continue, asked for a continuance on this new petition. So, I guess whatever the pleasure of the board, or whatever you want to do, Mr. Chairman, it's up to you.
All right. Is everyone okay with the continuance, or? Could you just let us know the next date? Open date for continuance? Okay. All right. If there's no further comments or other motions to continue the matter?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to continue ZB A twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four to April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy, Secretary of the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan, on camera roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance to April eighth.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member Brier.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance, April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right. The matter is we continue. Moving on to our next item on the agenda under new business, we have ZB A dash twenty twenty-four dash six, petition of variance. The applicant is Dennis and Lee Connors, property located at thirty-eight Westview Road and nineteen Lincoln Parkway. The applicant has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking a variance approval to construct a new single-family home by subdividing the existing lot at thirty-eight Westview Road and combining a remaining portion with nineteen Lincoln Parkway. The subject property are located in the suburban, single-family SF zoning district. The lot located at thirty-eight Westview requires a variance approval for the maximum floor area ratio, minimum lot area, and minimum rear yard requirements, and any other relief required in the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. The lot located at nineteen Lincoln Parkway requires a variance approval for the maximum floor area ratio and minimum lot area requirements, as well as any other relief required in the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. Good evening, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Dennis and Leanne Connors. Dennis and Leanne are with us here this evening. We also have Doug Lees of Land Engineering and Environmental Services. Doug prepared the site plan for this proposal. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting relief pursuant to this application relative to section five point one of the city zoning ordinance. Subject property consists of two tax parcels known as thirty-eight Westview Road and nineteen Lincoln Parkway. Together, these lots contain approximately sixteen thousand forty-seven square feet of land and a very uniquely shaped lot located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The existing home at thirty-eight Westview consists of two bedrooms, two baths, a two-car garage, and about twenty-one hundred square feet of living space. In advance of tonight's hearing, I provided the board with the site plan, which includes landscaping for the proposed lot on Lincoln Parkway. We've provided floor plans, elevations, a rendering of the proposed home, and a streetscape of the proposed home superimposed onto the existing lot. The applicant's proposing to split the existing sixteen thousand forty-seven square foot lot into two lots. The Westview lot would contain eight thousand fifty-five square feet of land, and the Lincoln Parkway lot would contain seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two square feet of land, so roughly equally sized lots. The proposed, the proposal also calls for the construction of the new home on the Lincoln Parkway lot. That home would consist of two thousand ninety-two square feet of land. It would contain three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a two-car garage. The relief that we're requesting tonight is almost identical for both lots. We're requesting relief for minimum lot area and floor area ratio for both lots. We're also requesting relief relative to the rear yard setback for Westview. The size of the lots which we're proposing are in character with several of the existing homes in this area. I've included with my submittal was an exhibit plan. On that exhibit plan, I identify lots that are short on lot area, don't have sufficient frontage, and lots that have both of those characteristics. They're short on lot area and sufficient frontage. So, in total, there are about twenty-two lots on that exhibit, which is a relatively small sampling of a geographical area of this neighborhood. So, what we're proposing is certainly in character with the neighborhood. The design of the proposed home for the Lincoln Parkway lot was done so that it would complement the lot and the neighborhood. As I said, we provided a rendering and a streetscape of the home superimposed onto the lot so that board can see almost exactly what the finished product would look like once constructed. We're also in receipt of the staff comments, so I would suggest that those comments are supportive of the project. They point out that the requests are minimal and that are, that the request is in character with the neighborhood. I typically go through the comments, but in this case, most of my remarks here cover the comments in one form or another. I'm, of course, happy to elaborate if board has any specific concerns. Dennis did his neighbor outreach and reviewed the proposal with, with most of the abutters. In fact, the abutter, or the neighbor at the corner of West, at the corner of Lincoln Parkway and Pine, was a little bit concerned about the size of the two-car garage as it relates to his lot line. Dennis took that back to his design team. They figured out they were able to shrink that footprint a little bit, and that seemed to alleviate the concerns of that particular neighbor. I'd also point out that this is not a spec lot for Dennis and, and Leanne. They have a young couple who is with us tonight somewhere over here, and that couple is very excited about the possibility of being able to build their home on this lot and move to the City of Lowell. In conjunction with this application, the zoning board application, we also have to appear before the, the planning board in order to get a special permit to reduce the frontage. We, we are proposing frontage on the Lincoln Parkway lot of eighty feet, where ninety is required, so we're before the planning board a week from tonight. So, with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Doug. Doug will review the plans with the board. Thank you.
Hi. Doug Lees from Land Engineering and Environmental Services. I have the plans here on the board. As I discussed, this is an existing condition plan. We, wasn't part of the submittal, but this is what the existing conditions are out on the site. This is Westview Road, Lincoln Parkway. Existing house is right in this location, and this is the vacant parcel on Lincoln Parkway. This is a line from an old subdivision plan. This is parcel A, parcel B, and this is lot one on the old subdivision plan. So, right now, the fault is the subdivision. The house back here with Lincoln Parkway, and the existing house up here on Westview We wouldn't be subdividing because parcel A and B already exist on our previous subdivision plan. It's just a matter of transferring the parcels that were previously created back in, I think it was two thousand and two. Original lots, these two lots represent the original lots as they stood on the nineteen twenty-two plan for Sunset Edition. So, this is the site plan we submitted. It shows the house sitting on the lot facing Lincoln Parkway, and the existing house on Westview Road, driveway coming out. We'll close it, two trees, not shown on the site plan, but we talked to the Dennis, the owner, afterwards, and he's proposing to put up a fence on both side lot lines and the back lot line. Right now, this existing wood, six-foot stockade fences in disarray. Some of them are falling down along the lot line. And in the back, there's a chain link fence, then it switches to a white vinyl fence behind this property. So, just to fore the wood, we would just install the white vinyl fence around all three lot lines to, you know, protect the neighbors and provide privacy on the lot. It's relatively straightforward. Straightforward, it, it looks like a building lot with a drive down the street, and I think This is just the rendering of the lot that the architect did. I think this was near plan set, going included it, but it really just shows the same thing as the site plan, but at a larger scale. The two trees opposed, the house, porch, deck, garage, driveway. One thing he did point out on here is the depth of lawn, the existing right-of-way on Lincoln Parkway, I believe it's eighty feet. So, there's, at one end, there's seventeen feet of grass between the pavement and the lot line, and the other end is twenty-four, twenty-five feet of grass. There's a large strip of grass, sixteen hundred and twenty square feet of lawn area in front of the building. So, that's the area between the road and the house, and it's also set back from the lot line, so it's really set back from the road. That'll, it, it's maintained, well, it's outside the fence now, but everybody along the street maintains it as part of the yard for the most part, so it'll continue to be maintained as part of this property. So, it really makes the lot a little bit bigger than it appears on, on paper. That's kind of surprising to see an eighty-foot right-of-way in this neighborhood. This is a photograph of the Lincoln Parkway lot, looking at the back of, this is thirty-eight West, West Road, the back of the house. This is Lincoln Parkway. Here's the chain link fence along the lot line, and it's just a lawn area. You can see it's just a, you know, a vacant building lot. If you could see, the photograph is, there's a house on both sides, so it's really. This is the rendering the architect did, which really, I think it's defense, where he was able to put the house right on the lot. You can see the actual photograph, the house next door. This is from street view. You can tell that the curb wasn't on the road because the road's been improved since street view was nobody. It shows how the house will look on the property should it get its approvals. And again, you can see the depth of grass that you're going to have from the house to the street due to that extra twenty feet in the right-of-way. And the pavement in the right-of-way is about thirty feet wide, so it's not, you're not stumping on the pavement. This is a floor plan for the house. It's a, it's a three-bedroom house, two and a half baths, two-car garage, three bedrooms on the second floor, a master bedroom with a master bath, two bedrooms, a little, you know, studier foyer around the stairway to come down. They were over the kitchen, the garage, the deck off the back, with half the bathroom on the first floor, and the entrance way. The house is about, it's about three thousand square feet of living floor area. So, it's not a big house. It's a nice house. I think it fits a nice, with the neighborhood. Yeah, the architectural renderings, the street, we're showing the porch and the garage, the back view, you know, the side views. It's about, from first floor to the peak, I think it's twenty-eight feet, so the height as measured by the zoning would be around twenty-five feet. Again, it's a nice house. Here's the existing house on thirty-eight Westview. We just included this because this house has these variances too, so we thought we should include this house. This is the street view from that house. I didn't have floor plans, but I was able to get a street view. And I think this is just a rendering, yeah, this is just a rendering the architect did before he put it on the street, so it just shows the same. The same is the same. I think I covered everything, and you've already gone over what the variances were, so if anybody has any questions on the plan, I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Doug. So, as I indicated in my narrative, we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the requested relief tonight. The relief can be granted without any detriment to the public good. The intent of zoning is satisfied. We're proposing a single-family home in a single-family zoning district that fits the character of the neighborhood. And a hardship does exist for the applicant if the relief is not granted in terms of the upkeep of that west, of the Lincoln Parkway lot, which has no value, no utility to the Westview Road lot at all. In other words, if you were to, to put Lincoln, I'm sorry, West, Westview up for sale at eight thousand fifty-five square feet, you'd see no difference in value at eight thousand fifty-five square feet to the sixteen thousand square feet. So, we believe we, we meet the criteria for issuance of these special permits. I'd close by suggesting that, considering the, the extreme housing crisis that we are currently expanding, experiencing, anytime we can add a home to the housing stock, to the city's housing stock, without detriment to the character of the neighborhood that we're working within, it's a benefit to the city, and that is exactly what we're doing tonight. So, with that, we respectfully request approval tonight. We're happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Chairman, before I hand it back to you, I just want to confirm, did you see, receive some letters of support from neighbors, for the record?
Yes, for the record, we received, I want to say, three or four letters of support.
All right. So, I'm sure you read those into the, thank you very much.
Yeah. I can do that, yeah. All right. Now, we're over here into the public. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? All right, just, you want to come to the lectern and just say your name and address, and just, whatever you'd like to say, sir?
Good evening, Chair. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joseph McMahon, and I live at twenty-six Westview Road. I've lived there for twenty-two years, and I've come here tonight to voice my opposition to this project. The reasons are really clear. The clear fact is, on the, on the Lincoln Parkway lot, they just don't have enough of land to build on. The lot located at nineteen Lincoln Parkway is approximately fifty-eight hundred and eighty-six square feet, and it requires a variance. Thirty-eight Westview Road is built on a ten thousand one hundred and sixty-one square foot lot. A portion of that ten thousand one hundred and sixty-one square foot lot includes a rectangular twenty-two thousand one hundred and six square foot parcel, or approximate, that extends to Lincoln Parkway, as you have in the site plan. This project is an attempt to build a house of approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet on a lot of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square feet, with the addition of that land from thirty-eight Westview Road. The proposal would allow the existing lot at thirty-eight Westview Road to be modified to reduce the size of the lot. This would involve subtracting approximately two thousand one hundred and six square feet from the parcel of land at thirty-eight Westview Road and adding it to nineteen Lincoln Parkway lot. This would result in thirty-eight Westview Road lot of, being of size approximately eight thousand and fifty-five square feet. The resulting nineteen Lincoln Parkway lot, if the special permit were allowed through the planning board next week, would result in nineteen Lincoln Parkway lot being seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square feet, or approximately that size. Things to consider, and which I'm in opposition of this plan, we want to be consistent with existing Lowell zoning ordinance, Lowell zoning book, Article Five, dimensional requirements. We do not want to have action taken that would adversely impact and alter the essential character of our neighborhood. It should not result in detrimental impacts to the neighborhood character. Allowing this variance would set a precedent on allowing the modification of existing zoning requirements requiring minimum lot size for buildable lots. This could lead to a decrease in the property values of our neighborhood and throughout Zoning, zoning should satisfy a public need and not constitute a grant of special privilege to an individual owner. Granting a zoning, a request for zoning should result in equal treatment of similarly situated properties. Granting of zoning should not in any way set an undesirable precedent for other properties in the neighborhood or within areas of the city. Some background, some background on this big, the big parcel of land, which was part of twenty-six Westview Road at one point in time. So, I'm going to get into the details of how nineteen Lincoln Parkway was purchased into, in, purchased as a parcel in May of twenty-eleven. It's in the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds. The deed number is booked twenty-two, twenty-four, nine ninety-five, page one fifty-eight. The date, five twenty-seven, twenty-eleven, and the consideration was ten thousand dollars, and Leanne Connors purchased it. When the owner purchased the parcel, the lot was not buildable per Lowell zoning ordinance. So, hardship to owner would exist if owner, if owner couldn't do anything with the lot. Maybe the owner should not have bought the lot to begin with. A point brought up by, I believe, the builder, the builder just stated that this was not a subdivision, a subdivided lot in the past. That is inaccurate. The owner of Lincoln Parkway, nineteen Lincoln Parkway, currently has approximately fifty-eight point eight-six percent of the required lot size to build per Lowell zoning ordinance. The lot size is fifty-eight hundred and eighty-six square feet. Nineteen Lincoln Parkway has sixty point seven four feet of frontage. This does not meet the frontage requirements per Lowell zoning ordinance. The minimum frontage is ninety feet. Lowell zoning ordinance, section five dot one dot one seven, allows for a special permit to reduce the minimum frontage for residential uses by up to fifteen feet, and I understand that. But if granted a special permit, this would leave nineteen Lincoln Parkway about fourteen feet short of required frontage. In the zoning ordinance, the FAR requirements are stated. The FAR proposed for nineteen Lincoln Parkway is not consistent with Lowell zoning ordinance. Max FAR is point three five. Lot A, which is the lot on Westview Road, would have a FAR of point four nine. Lot B, nineteen Lincoln Parkway, will have a FAR of point four one. Going into the history of the lot, prior to, prior to March second, nineteen ninety-two, twenty-six Westview Road contained the current lots of thirty-eight Westview Road and nineteen Lincoln Parkway. Louis Saab, who was a resident of Westview Road, purchased twenty-six Westview Road from Judith Bloom on that date. Louis Saab subdivided twenty-six Westview Road into three lots, creating the land that is nineteen Lincoln Parkway and thirty-eight Westview Road, those lots. I'm not saying those addresses. The subdivision happened between three-two, nineteen ninety-two, March second, nineteen ninety-two, when he purchased twenty-six Westview Road. It happened between that date and six twenty-eight, nineteen ninety-four, when he sold the new twenty-six Westview Road, which just was the lot with the house on it, to Deborah and John Wilkie. This lot had approximately sixteen thousand square feet of land removed from the original Louis Saab and his partner, Peter Joseph, tried unsuccessfully at that time to build two houses on the approximately eight thousand square foot lots of that now, that now compromised nineteen Lincoln Parkway and thirty-eight Westview Road. A hearing was held by the Lowell zoning board of appeals. The Lowell zoning board of appeals did not grant the variances sought by Louis Saab and Peter Joseph due to neighborhood opposition. In two thousand and three, Peter Joseph, Louis's partner, joined the eight thousand square foot lots together and subsequently sold a ten thousand one hundred and sixty-one square foot lot of thirty-eight Westview Road to Dennis and Leanne Connors, upon which they have built their residence at thirty-eight Westview Road. The square foot of the lot required for thirty-eight Westview Road was ten thousand square feet in two thousand and three, when the owners purchased it, per Lowell zoning Today, I stand before a board that is a lawful board. It's a law-abiding board, and its processes and actions act with integrity. It also treats zoning requests for variance in a way that provides equal treatment of similarly situated properties throughout Lowell. It grants rezoning consistent with the policies adopted by the City of Lowell. Granting a rezoning request should satisfy a public need and not constitute a grant of special privilege to an individual owner. Zoning changes should promote compatibility with adjacent and nearby uses and should not result in detrimental impacts to the neighborhood character. Granting a request for zoning should not in any way send an, set an undesirable precedent for other properties in the neighborhood or within other areas of the city. There is tonight here a substantial lack of support from the residents of Westview Road in opposition, and not only Westview Road, but Lincoln Parkway. I have gathered signatures via petition, which I have presented to this board. Granting these variances would be inconsistent with existing Lowell zoning ordinance. Granting these variances would be, would adversely impact and alter the essential character of our neighborhood. It should not result in detrimental impacts to the neighborhood character. Granting these variances would be, would set a precedent on allowing the modification of existing zoning requirements requiring minimum lot size for buildable lots. This could lead to a decrease in the property values of our neighborhood and throughout the City of Lowell. The new home, if allowed on nineteen Lincoln Parkway, would all but eliminate my privacy due to the structure being two stories and overlooking my backyard. I have a seventeen-year-old daughter who has some anxiety issues, and she would appreciate not having anyone look at her if she was out in the backyard, just getting some sun in the summertime. Thank you very much this evening for your time and consideration. I really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. I just wanted to add on to, to what you referenced. We did get a petition. We did get a petition, a little opposition or petition here with 19 signatures, all either from Westview Road or Lincoln Parkway. And my colleagues saw it too, and Mr. Trump will submit that for the record as well. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? Yeah, you want to just, yeah, just state your name and address, and you want to just, anything you want to say, ma'am, is fine.
My name is Krista McMahon. I live at 26 Westview Road, and I oppose this as well as my husband for the same reason.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Irene Gerbries. I live at 40 Lincoln Parkway. I am in opposition of this petition.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition?
Hello, my name is Dorothy Doyle, and I live at 27 Lincoln Parkway. I am in opposition to this. I believe that zoning requirements should be fair to everyone, and they should not be changed for individuals. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Bertos, and I live on 77 Westview Road. One thing that is going on in our street, especially at the time I bought my house, there was no new homes, and some way, before you know, there are more homes that were put in the street, and the traffic is unbelievable. So I would like to stay, if it's possible, the way we are and not to be afraid to walk the street or take the wrong corner or turn around or come out in the, our street, you know, from our house to the street and to go to work in the morning. So I would appreciate it if you people check this thing good before you make your answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening.
Thanks for hearing me. My name is Roland Mainville. I live at 78 Westview Road in Lowell with my wife Tracy and my two daughters. I think this proposal is good for the neighborhood. Doesn't impact Westview Road at all. There's a vacant lot on Lincoln Parkway that I think should be, have a house there. I think it was intended in the original subdivision, and I think it would be great for the neighborhood. Thanks for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Sean Moriarty. I live at 451 Pine Street with my wife Caitlin. Been in the neighborhood about eight years. I can see the vacant lot from the end of my driveway. It's only about 200, 300 feet away. I think it would be a fantastic addition to the neighborhood. I don't think Dennis and Leann are doing this on spec or trying to make a dollar. They have a young family that's looking to move to Lowell and would, would start their family there. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I really appreciate your consideration tonight.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Patrick Martin. My wife Jackie and I live at 24 Monadnock Road, and we would love to see a young family be able to come into the neighborhood. I understand that, that we're asking for a change, but with how hard it is for young families these days to even find a spot, I don't see this changing the composition of the neighborhood, which I grew up in and care deeply about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening.
I'm Taylor Shelton. I live at 61 Rendall Park. I have the fortune of living there and driving by this vacant lot every day, and I think it would be a disservice to not complement that lot with a single-family home.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ellen Bowser. I live at 167 Westview Road, and I am strongly in favor of a single-family home being built on this property. It would be a great addition to the Highlands with a family that's already looking to move in and start a family. Dennis and Leann have been amazing neighbors all these years. They're not doing this for profit. This is just to better the Highland neighborhood, so I am strongly in favor of this.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Morse. I live across the street at 25 Westview Road from Dennis and Leann. They've been great neighbors. They're great people. Dennis has been in the, in the city for his whole life. If this new house looks anything like his house that he built, it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. And like has been said, a young couple moving in, it's a great opportunity for them to build a life in Lowell. I think it's a, if you consider it, I think it'd be a great addition to the area. As far as traffic, it's not going to affect Westview Road at all. Most of traffic is obviously going to be on Lincoln Parkway. So I think it's going to be great. I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, T.J. McCarron. I live at 831 Westford Street. I'm in full support of this plan. I know the neighborhood very well. I grew up in the neighborhood. I delivered newspapers on Lincoln Parkway and Westview Road. I think the new home will be done in a top-notch fashion. I think the addition will be within the character of the neighborhood and the street. And too often, we're seeing young, talented, successful people leave the city. This is the, the opposite of that. We have an opportunity to, to attract a young couple that will be a benefit to the community and the city as a whole. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Hold on one minute, sir. We're just in the, yeah, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Dennis Moriarty. I live at 28 Rendall Park Drive, speaking in favor of this. I think we have a vacant lot that we can fit a single-family home on, and it would be a great improvement in the neighborhood.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is William Nichols. I live at 48 Rendall Park Drive, which is a street that runs off of Lincoln Parkway. I do not know the Connors or any parties involved in this, and actually, in the past, I have spoken against some smaller lots and houses that are being asked to be put in at weird angles. When I take, take a look at this project, I think it fits. I think the role of the zoning board and planning board for granting variances apply in certain situations. I think this is one of them. It looks like it's a minor variance request to me. The small piece that's being asked to be added to the existing parcel makes sense. 8,000 square feet, as well as that piece that I think was, was addressed earlier that comes out to the street, that actually isn't part of the lot, but actually makes it much larger, is very indicative of all the houses on that street and even my own street. Neighbors keep it up. They tend to look at it as part of their lot, keep it well organized and mowed. And I think when you physically look at the lot and look at what they're trying to do, it makes sense. It's very close. The design of what looks to be like the house on that lot, I think, fits very well. The lot, up to date, has been well-kept and mowed. It's not a lot that's overgrown and is really a detriment to the neighborhood. So I think a single-family home placed accordingly on that lot will fit, and I am supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
James Armstrong, 101 Florence Road. I'm in support of this project. I've lived in the Highlands my whole life, and I think this new property would be a great addition to the upper Highlands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening, sir.
What I have to say is not really...
Can you speak into the mic?
Two people before this gentleman, they, they took the stand, is a person that doesn't even own any property in our street, and he got up here, excuse me, and gave his idea how good it's going to be if it's going to be another house. So, so I think that it's not fair for him to be allowed to talk because he doesn't live there. He lives, you know, we don't know. He's, he's living with his girlfriend. So, and he's talking about how much traffic is on the street. I think there will be, to our neighbor misconduct if everybody's, you know, you, if the thing is very tight, that they will allow him to build another house. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, all right. The public hearing is closed at the moment. Just also for the, for the record, we did receive three letters, four, four residents in support of this as well. Bob McMahon at 57 Lincoln Parkway, Kelly Fenero at 21 Conore Street. Ma'am, you have to wait. The public hearing is closed, so you got to wait, okay? Denise Capello at 41 Westview Road, and Nancy Judge, as well, the co-chair of the Highland Neighborhood Association. Counselor, did you want to add anything for me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I'd just add that anybody that spoke tonight, whether they were in opposition or in favor, stated their address, and they were all residents of the city in very close proximity to this property. I also heard from the, the opposition, and what I heard was that, that this home was going to alter the character of the neighborhood to a detriment. I don't know how, looking at that home, anybody could suggest that. There's no question that adding this prop, this home to that lot will increase the values around the surrounding homes. But with that, I'm happy to address any questions that the board members may have.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. All right. So now we'll open up questions and comments from the board. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would say that it's a, it's a very nice design of the property. I do know that under Section 5.1, an SF, SSF requires 10,000 square feet. But given the fact of the care that has been taken to design this, this project, to make it look compatible to the neighborhood, I think it's, it's, even though it's a smaller package, I think that it, just by the design itself, it, it looks like it fits into the character of the neighborhood. And it's no disrespect to those who are opposed it, but I, I drove around that area, and I was impressed with how nice and quiet that area was. And I don't think that the applicants, forgive me, I have a sore throat, so if you can hear In my opinion, it doesn't look like the applicants did this with any mal-intent. The design looks like it's done with care, and I think it will fit into the character of the neighborhood. I, I think some of the, some of the requests, I see that, you know, DPD said that there is, the relief is minimal, just based on what the property is today. So it's a total of 16,000 square feet. That's being divided by two. One has a few square feet smaller than the other. I think it's, it's a good project, so I would be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During my tenure on the zoning board, I, I've developed a real trust and confidence in our dedicated DPD staff. And as a result, I rely heavily upon their expertise and their input. It's not often that the comments that we receive from our DPD staff endorse all aspects of the petitioner's narrative. If you didn't know any better, you would have thought that staff wrote the narrative. I'm borrowing from those comments. "The proposal meets the city's master plan for creating new housing units. With respect to neighborhood character, will have no significant impact upon the neighborhood character. The proposed use of single-family homes matches the surrounding single-family properties in, in the neighborhood. The 8,000 square feet is similar to the surrounding properties of Lincoln Parkway and Westview. There are no environmental issues. There are no expected traffic or safety issues. There are no impacts to public utilities or the city's finances, except for the positive impact we're going to have on the tax base." So I, I think I can confidently say, for those of you who are a bit unsure, you need only look at the home at 38 Westview Road, which happens to be the primary residence of the petitioners, Leann and Dennis Connors. You look at that home, and you'll gain all the confidence you need that this new home will only serve as a further enhancement to the neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier.
Mr. Chairman, since the council had a chance to speak, can I call up or not?
So right now, the public hearing is closed, sir.
Because he's, he made a statement, and I...
He, he's a petitioner, so he's allowed to, to comment. If, if someone wants to give some of their time to you, that's different, but right now the public hearing is closed, sir, so...
Would one of you zoning board members just give me one minute of time? Please.
It's up to the member, if they want to.
Just, just hold on, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions, but I, I could give, represent, Joe Moriarty a couple minutes to speak your, your needs here, if you'd like.
Good God, sir, you want to come to the left, Tony?
So the portion, this is, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The points that I was referencing with regards to the zoning, Lowell zoning board, particularly Sections 5 dot 1 dot 2, computation of lot area. "The lot or yard areas required for any new building or use may not include any part of a lot that is required by any other building or use to comply with any requirements of this chapter." Section 5 dot 1 dot 9, reduction of lot. "No lot shall be changed in size or shape so that the height, area, yard, or off-street parking and loading requirements herein prescribed are no longer satisfied." Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd just like to start off by saying that I'm glad to see this petition come before us with less variances than I've seen in the past. I'd like to start off by saying that you exceed side yard setback, which is important to me because that's important for neighborhood character, to have side yards honored. You meet front yard setback with the new petition. You don't meet the garage setback on the existing... You don't meet the garage setback on the existing building, on the existing, on 38. That's existing, though. The existing garage is built closer to the street than what we currently allow in zoning. So that's a variance for an existing situation that I kind of see as unfortunate that we have to grant a variance for that, but it's a pre-existing condition.
Pre-existing, right.
And also, I see the rear yard setback variance that you're asking for in a similar light. You have a structure at 38 Westview that doesn't honor the rear yard setback of 25 feet that you built closer to the property line. Again, a pre-existing condition. So the variances here that I see that really are, are being addressed, from me, my standpoint, is the FAR, which is minimal for Lot 39. It's a .06 increase. So it's an FAR for both lots. It's lot area. And I see the existing Lot 38 having one of these pork chop lots that we all hated to see back when we were getting them in the city. It makes sense to be consistent with the neighboring lots on that street, in my opinion, which are under the 10,000 square foot number. And then the, the frontage. So you're, you're consistent with the frontage on the Westview lot of 90, and you're looking for relief for the new lot of 29 Lincoln Parkway. But you're meeting side yard setback, and you're meeting the front yard setback, and you're meeting the rear yard setback. So you're doing a great job of honoring the intent of zoning, of doing a building that fits that lot.
Correct. For the most part, we fit in the, in the building envelope.
And still providing a great home in the city here, which we definitely need more of. And I agree with the speakers that it does make sense. So I can easily see this, largely because I view this as reasonable, taking that, that 2,000 square foot pork chop from the adjacent lot and adding it to this parcel to make sense of it. And I agree with my fellow board member that the comments from the city were in support as well, which is important, the city staff. So I can look favorably on this. I want to thank the neighbors for coming out. I appreciate the comments, and I think it's important for all of us to weigh in on this and understand what it is that we're doing here, and not just make choices that are convenient, but we do need housing. And this is meeting criteria that I see as critical, which is front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback on this lot that's undersized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comments from all of the residents, all the neighbors who are opposed and in support. I'm looking at this because we're only dealing with the heart, with the variance approvals on these matters. And based on the comments from DPD, they seem, they seem, they fail to seem that the requests for reliefs are somewhat minimal. But I'm looking at this from the standpoint of, what, does it meet the criteria? Is there a special hardship owing to the circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures? This is where the point comes, comes across to me. But not affecting generally the zoning district. The single-family lot, that's open. Yes, it's been parceled out. Whether it was in the past to meet prior zoning criteria, I don't know. That was many years ago. But I'm looking at, going back and looking at, again, Counselor, thank you again for providing the deeds, so I can track this back and look at the plans. These lots were separated going back to 1922. That did, that included that little strip of land that goes back from, that your clients purchased back in the day. So, and this is back, going back to when Lincoln Parkway was actually called Wedge Road. So, and I'm even looking at the site plan or what the prior plans were, way down. And Wedge Road has a little strip going in the middle of it, going all the way down. So I can see now how that, how that affects, especially with the rightaways on each side now, with Lincoln Parkway. And taking into account the fact that, including the fact that you have a rightaway, the city's rightaway, that we're not supposed to be taking into account. But I mean, it gives me the idea that this is not generally affecting the zoning district as a whole. So I think you got a hardship there. I think you meet that part of the criteria.
No question.
Yeah. As far as public good, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think you made your burden there. I understand there's opposition, but I would, I've not been persuaded that there's, that putting the single-family home on there, on lots that are, on a lot that's going to be similar to existing lots in the general area. I think you meet the criteria for the public good, especially having a new home. It's going to be taxed with a new, apparently a young family who is ready and eager to join our, join our city and our town and become members of our society and members of the neighborhood. So I think you clearly meet the public good. And intent of zoning satisfied goes back again to the hardship. It's not generally affecting the zone, the single-family zone, and it's without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of zoning. So again, I appreciate the opposition, understandable, but this seems to me like a no-brainer. This is, this seems perfect, a perfect fit in this neighborhood, in this lot, for this particular thing. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I was just at this location two weeks ago, just to kind of get the layout of the whole neighborhood and see how this project would fit in. I was surprised, pulling up to the lot, that there was absolutely nothing there except a boulder in the middle of it.
A rock, right.
Yeah, and they're going to keep the rock according to the plans and put a tree next to it. So I think, and I appreciate not wanting a house in your backyard, but I think the setbacks are met. This isn't a dense neighborhood, and we're trying to wedge a single-family into an undersized lot. We're talking about two 8,000 square foot lots. We need some relief on the frontage for Lincoln Parkway, but it's not major, as DPD said. There's similar lot sizes and frontage in that neighborhood, so we're not, we're not trying to put something in that doesn't fit what's already in that neighborhood. I think 8,000 square foot lots. We're not asking for a big relief on the variance. So I echo what my colleague said, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, so I also will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair organizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I agree with my fellow board members as far as the hardship and then the layout of the home. As a shortage of housing. So I don't have any questions as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, I'll be voting in favor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I think for me, and again, like my colleagues, I appreciate everyone who came out tonight, whether you spoke in favor or against. I always, I appreciate that, I know my colleagues do. I really think it's important for us to have that input and that voice, how things impact the city as a whole. And with that being said, I think, I think for me, this project is done appropriately, tastefully. I think it meets in terms of neighborhood characteristics. It does fit in with the layout of the neighborhood in general. And, you know, if, if, if the Alpkin came in and they wanted to build a two or three family, and, you know what I mean, make it a, like a big project, I think I would have a hard time approving it. But, but again, I think, I think, to your credit, Counselor, to, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Connors, you know, you guys did this appropriately, in my opinion. You know, it fits in, you could have really went for the moon. I mean, I don't know how, how that would have went, but I think this is done tastefully. Again, to the point of my colleagues, you know, DPD saw very minimal impact. And again, to the neighbors, again, says, you know, I really think they've done their due diligence, they've, they've done the legwork. They seem like good people, I think. You know, I think this will add to the quality of the neighborhood in the long run. I know it doesn't seem like that to some people right now, but I think overall, this, this would be a good addition to the neighborhood and to the city as a whole, and to, to, to the whole Commonwealth. You know, as everyone said, we do need housing. So I'll be in support as well. Do we have any conditions from my colleagues? I didn't hear nothing, so, okay. All right, if there's no further comments, we'll move forward with the motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-6 for variances at 38 Westview Road and 19 Lincoln Parkway, a variance for minimum FAR at proposed Lot 29, and for minimum FAR at proposed Lot 36, for minimum frontage at proposed Lot 29. I'm sorry, yeah, and for minimum lot area for proposed Lot 29 and proposed Lot 36. And for variance for minimum rear yard setback at proposed Lot 36.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
All right, approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, keeping approved. Wish you the best of luck.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Yeah, yeah, if people are done yet, you can leave yet. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. People can as well, if you'd like to stay for the other petitions, you can. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda under new business. We have ZBA-2024-4, petitioner's a variance. Alpkin is Donick Corporation, property located at 4H Suffolk Street and 585 Market Street. The Alpkin is applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, seeking a variance approval to construct a 33-unit mixed-use development at 4H Suffolk Street and 585 Market Street. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use UMU and multiple-family overlap district, mid-rise MFOM zoning district. The proposal also requires variance approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals per Section 5.2.8 for relief from the corner clearance requirements, per Section 9.8.4 for relief from the side yard setback to residential uses requirements, per Section 6.2 for relief from the loading requirement, and for any other relief required in the Lowell ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I represent, my name's William Martin. Office is at 491 Dutton Street here in Lowell. Represent the developer, Donick Corporation. This is the same development group that currently has the Acre Crossing project under construction. It's a venture between Don Gasha, Will Soucy, who are both here with me this evening. John Bell is also on, on the project with them, and he is here. The engineers are Hancock, they're the same engineers that were on Acre Crossing. Russ Tefford and Brian Godreau are here from Hancock. And the architect is not here this evening, Phil Tebow. Been the project consultant on this for financing and other matters, Steve Jankus. So he was on the Acre Crossing project, and he's also here. So it's, it's the same group, a little bit different design. This is 33 units, as you said. Thirty of those are one-bedroom units. Three of them are two-bedroom units. It's a project that is pending before the planning board. We were there. It's under the new zoning overlay district for mid-rise projects. And those are, I guess that, that portion of zoning code's intended to permit as-of-right projects, but there are a couple of variances, even, even with the as-of-right nature that we need. In the advertisement, we did apply for relief from the setback that requires five feet of a buffer zone. We originally, in the original design, did not have the five feet. We do meet that requirement now, so we do not need that variance. There's been some redesign of the project in response to comments from staff and in response to comments from the planning board. The relief we need tonight is from the corner clearance requirement, which we do not meet. I note in the staff memo that the traffic engineer said that's really not a concern of the traffic division because the corner clearance is on a one-way street. Suffolk Street's a one-way street, so no one would be coming out of that. The other variance we would need is for the requirement of a loading zone. Again, in response to some of the staff comments, they like to see commercial uses on the first floor. We've accommodated that. We have approximately 6,500 square feet of commercial, proposed commercial uses on the first floor. And the code requires, if you have retail use of more than 5,000 feet, you would need a variance. So that's the second piece of relief that we are seeking this evening. We did meet with the planning board on Monday. There were several concerns they had. They want to see us provide a shadow analysis, which is called for in the zoning. We have that completed, has not been submitted yet. Transportation plan, we are in the process of completing. And they also want to know what our plans are for the rear alleyway along the property. So we've got some ideas there about lighting and fencing and things that will make those secure. So happy to talk about those, but I think there was a planning board issues. This project will be affordable units. They'll be homeownership units, the same state financing program that we are using for Acre Crossing. We plan to apply for here. That's the Mass Commonwealth Builder Program, which allows for homeownership, and it's limited to folks of 100% of area median income. So we think this is something, a good project for the neighborhood. We think it offers homeownership in a neighborhood that mostly has rental units today. We think it'll be complementary of the Acre Crossing development. And, and so that's really it. I, you know, I'm happy to have the engineers walk through the design, if that's, if that's what you want, or we can tell you what we have planned, but that's essentially it. We're seeking two pieces of relief.
Okay, then, thank you, Counselor. If you have nothing further, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or disposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions and comments to the board now. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to speak in favor of this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Brier.
The use is, is allowed by right, and it's the type of development that the TOD overlay district was designed to encourage. The proposal meets all the goals of the... The proposal meets all the goals of the TOD overlay district, and in particular, that's near and dear to my heart and a big concern to the Commonwealth, is the affordable homeownership opportunities that this project offers. That is, that's home-run material, and we need to support all these efforts. There's a lot of home building that goes on, but not affordable home building. People throw that term out. They throw it out a lot, they use it loosely, and they don't use it accurately. But in this case, this proposal meets all the goals, and I wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I noticed in the sections that you seem to have a lot of daylighting in that center shared space for circulation with overhead skylight that's basically continuous. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so there will be light filtering through all the floors down for the residents to enjoy in that center space?
That's the design, yes.
That's tremendous. That's tremendous. And then you were able to modify the plan for the signage for the retail space, according to the comments that you received from staff?
Yes.
And then you modified the floor plan, but I haven't seen a modified site plan that shows the five-foot setback. I understand the dimension of the building changed, but I don't know if the city has received a modified site plan, but I didn't see one posted. Is that not available at this point?
So this, Russ Tefford from Hancock Associates.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Yeah, so this rendering right here is reflected above the revised setback that we have. Previously, it was 3.8 feet from that reared side property line. Now it reads 5.3 feet at its shortest distance.
So where did the one foot or one and a half foot dimension come from? The main circulation spine in the center? Or how did you reduce the building to account for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you didn't catch that, you took it from the unit.
Nice, small amount. That's terrific. I would like to see a condition that we, that you provide a site plan showing that five-foot side yard setback, because we don't have one at least to review as part of our packet.
We can certainly do that.
Is there any landscaping on the streetscape being provided?
So to the south is Market Street, to the east is Suffolk Street, to the west is, you know, green space. And so part of the comments we've seen from staff, and that abuts the pocket park that's being constructed as part of the Acre Crossing project. So staff comments where they would like to see those integrated with pathways, so it looks like one continuous park and not two standalone ones. So we expect that's going to be a condition of any approval we get from the planning board. So there is green space planned on that side of the building and that five-foot buffer in the rear on the north side. So it's a park-type area. The storm storage is underneath subsurface, so that allows for the use of the property to the west of the building to be used as green space.
Okay, so maybe the condition could include not only the site plan showing the five-foot setback, but also to accommodate staff comments regarding landscaping, particular tree selection, and connecting to the path design that they're looking to continue in that area? Something to that effect? Okay.
That's our plan anyway, so that condition.
And then my last question is, is the building going to be heated and cooled with electric heat source and cooling source?
It's all electric.
It's all electric. Fabulous. Okay, home run. Thank you so much. No further comments.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I appreciate the project. It looks great. I understand you've been working with the city to try to get this thing going. It's clear from the comments from them that the DPD, Deputy DPD Director, Senior Planner, Design Planner, Historic Board Administrator, all went on a site visit, and they provided us comments that appears that, and every comment that you've taken back and reworked it, and we're just dealing with what we got here. And that's, as far as the corner clearance, I mean, the transportation engineer made a good point about the fact that it's mainly for the purposes of driving on, and Suffolk Street, the corner of Suffolk and Market is basically a one-way going down towards Merrimack Street. So it's, the corner clearance is somewhat moot to a concern, but it's a concern, but it's somewhat moot, so. I don't have any concerns about this. I think it's going to be a fantastic project. We need more additional housing and hopefully get some new businesses in the retail, in the commercial area and get downtown thriving again. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate the thoroughness of this project. You've gone back and forth with the different departments to address any concerns they have. Realistically, in front of us are two things, loading and corner clearance. Traffic Safety Engineer doesn't have a problem with the corner clearance, and I suppose we could say get rid of the green space and make a loading zone, but I think Member McCarthy would jump over the table and attack me if I did that, so I have no issues with this, and best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree with the rest of the board as well. I think this is a great project. We have a shortage of housing, not just in Lowell, but everywhere else, so I'm in favor of this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I also agree with my fellow board members. I do have one question, Attorney Martin. Earlier on, and this is just for my clarification, you mentioned that you were doing a transportation plan? Is that?
Yes.
But that has not been submitted yet?
That's correct. So the transportation plan is really to make resident, because there's no parking requirement, they want, there's things like bike racks, which are in the design. They want us to detail what we're doing there and what we do to make residents aware of alternatives to auto transportation, right? So there'd be a plan to communicate where bus routes are, what bus schedules are, even like phone numbers for Uber and Lyft, things like that. So that's what the plan entails of. It's in draft form, very close to being able to submit, we will submit it this week to the planning board.
Okay. Peter, this is not something that's conditioned, right? This is something that's submitted?
It was in the staff memo that it would be a condition of any planning board approval, that staff would approve it. However, the board itself wanted to see it before they would grant any approval. So we are going to submit it for next week's hearing.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I agree. I think this is, it's a very nice project, and, I mean, it's in line with what's going on in that area as well, so I think this would be a tremendous addition. And as Member Brier says, you need affordable housing, you know, not, I shouldn't say affordable housing, but housing that's affordable to people who, you know, who may need it, so. And it looks, again, like it's, this is managed well, so I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Counselor, you know, I agree with my colleagues. Great project. Like the vice chairman said, I think this is only enhanced downtown and make it more thriving. And to my other colleague's point, Mr. Brier, you know, we definitely need housing. Everyone says that, but affordable housing, it's like one of the biggest needs that people don't address. So, you know, any way I can support it, I support it, so, you know, I'd be supporting this as well. And then you're in favor of the condition that we talked about, right, Mr. Martin?
Yes, but we plan to do that anyway.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, did you have?
Actually, I think I'd just like to break it into three conditions if I could, just because I think it'd be a little clearer, to provide an updated site plan showing the five-foot side yard setback, and then to work with DPD to select appropriate tree species. And third one is to coordinate the site plan with Acre Crossing Plan to create cohesive connection to the park.
You okay with that, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-4 at 408 Suffolk Street and 585 Market Street for variance for relief for corner clearance requirement and for relief for loading requirement with the aforementioned three variance conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second one by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
I approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve with conditions.
All right, you've been approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening and the favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda under new business, we have ZBA-2024-5. A petition is a variance. The Alpkin is Samuel Borba, property located at 85 Seneca Street. The Alpkin is applied to the zoning board appeal, seeking a variance approval to create a parking area at 85 Seneca Street. The property is located in the traditional two-family TTF zoning district and requires variance under Section 6.1.10 for maximum curb requirements and minimum pavement setback requirements and any other relief required in the Loews ordinance. Is anyone here from Seneca Street?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Good evening, sir. Your name and address for the record, and why don't you tell us about your project?
Okay, so my name is Matthias Davenport. I'm here with Mr. Samuel Borba. I'm serving for him as a translator. So, yes, he would like the extension of the parking area from the existing, which is for two cars, to three cars, perhaps maybe a fourth visitor to be able to off-street park. So it's just to have the slightly larger area to be able to accommodate all three cars off-street parking from the existing.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favors petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearings closed. Now we're going to open up questions, the comments from the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. First of all, this is a two-family, and I believe it has a two-car garage, and there's two parking spaces that are off-street in front of those, in front of each garage door. But I've seen a third car parked on the landscape area by the entrance, not knowing if that's meant to be a long-term situation, but it's not on a gravel or paved surface, but rather a dirt surface in any event. And now you're asking for three or four cars addition to the two-car garage, the two cars in front of the garage, and the space that's on the landscaped area by the entrance. If you count the cars in the garage, which often people do, that's five in front of the building and another four, that's nine cars. Is that correct?
So Mr. Borba was just telling me about the garage. So he currently uses the garage for storage, so he would like not to have to count the garage as off-street parking, because he doesn't really utilize it as such. And so the third car would not be where it is now if he's able to enlarge the parking area.
Okay, but actually, we're decreasing the gravel area from what exists today to what you have on the proposed site plan. What you have today shows gravel from the sidewalk or whatever along the building garage area to the property line, and it goes back beyond what you're currently showing on the site plan to the edge of the house, to the tree area. So the new site plan is reducing what currently is gravelled. Is that correct?
Just one second. Let me translate it here to him, so he can speak up. Oh, he's telling me that the new site plan was the correct one that he needed to have for three cars. Apparently, the way he has the third car on the side is what he was allowed to, but with the new plan, he said that that's what he was allowed to present before the board.
Okay, well, the site plan that you have provided us shows a 50-by-30 proposed gravel parking area. Right now, you have a gravel area that is quite a bit larger than that. My guess is that it's 50 feet wide or so, tapering down to maybe 45 feet in the back by the edge of the existing house, and it's probably 65 feet deep. So we would be looking at a landscaped area in the side yard of eight feet, 8.45 feet, and a landscaped area in the back, rather than the gravel that you currently have, and the landscaped area along the side by the stone walkway of probably close to six or seven feet. You're asking for three parking spaces in an area that's 50 by 30, and I don't understand why you need something that large to park three vehicles. Typically, a car is in a 9-by-18 parking space, and if you were to multiply nine times three, that's only 27. I don't understand the depth being 50 feet. And I don't have a parking layout to understand why you need 30 by 50. But I do think it's an eyesore for the neighborhood right now, the way you've done it, and I'd like to see something that repairs that and provides landscaping, grass area for one, but also provides a reasonable gravel parking area that makes sense for three cars. And what you presented here doesn't give me the assurance that you are going to put three cars there. It almost looks like you could put five cars or more there if you wanted to, and I don't understand why you need so much parking for a two-family. In any event, I do think that I would like to see a landscape plan that illustrates grass or shrubbery that's more indicative of the neighborhood, rather than what you have right now, which is just gravel. And I'd like to see a layout for three parking spaces that helps me understand why 30 by 50 is being used as a dimension just to get three parking, three cars off the street, when it could be done in something like 30 by 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes-
not commercial vehicles there. There's a lot of cars, and he owns a contracting business, so I, we think the employees may be parking on the lot.
No, and I recall the prior hearing, there was discussion about a boat having to be planted, having to be parked there. Now, on top of it, when I went by today, you have a car, a vehicle, clearly parked on an area marked grass area. Why should we be granting you relief on this? You're not even meeting our conditions. You want to have your, you want Mr. Borba to speak to that, please? I really want to understand, why should we grant him relief when he didn't even meet the conditions that we previously put on this back in 2022?
Yes, just one second. Yeah, he said that it has to be one of his roommates. He was working, he was unaware that somebody had parked on the grass out there.
Does Mr. Borba live in the property?
Yes.
I find it, I'm sorry. I don't find that credible. That car is clearly, clearly, clearly not parked in a designated parking area. It was clearly on grass. It's on the opposite side of the walkway, where the driveway area actually is. I had my concerns previously with this project beforehand because you had two driveway areas, you had two, you have two garages. Mr. Borba's representative stated that he was using the garages for storage. I believe the board, we gave him the benefit of the doubt. My concern was with, there was, we were taking away a lot of green space for additional parking that didn't seem to be necessary. I think at first, I even asked, I even wanted to put a condition to limit it to one spot, and at that point, I think Mr. Borba's representative said, if I recall, that, well, they need space for three, for three spots plus a boat. And the board, we gave him the benefit of the doubt and provided it to him on the condition that he provide a new site plan to show the limits of that gravel area, which he didn't do. And now, you're coming with us with a site plan that's even more extensive as to what we even were anticipating. So, I'm sorry. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. I am just not, I am just not in agreement with this at all. But I will listen to my other fellow board members and see what they say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I went back and actually watched this meeting because I wanted to make sure I knew exactly what was going on. And the representative at the end of the meeting specifically asked, did he need to have a certified site plan? And the answer, and Peter was actually at that meeting, was yes. So, we weren't operating off ignorance and forgot one of the conditions. It was asked by the petitioner if we need that, yes. We try to operate in good faith with the board. Member Callahan was by today, and there was somebody parked on the grass. The homeowner says that, oh, he didn't know. Well, a week ago, Sunday, I was over at the house, and somebody was parked on the grass. So, it seems to be a common occurrence. Now, the original petition back in '22 was for two cars. We moved it to two cars with a boat, and the project now is an entire yard. There was concern that this was going to happen. None of the conditions have been met. It's supposed to be four or five inches deep of impervious material, and it looks like it's just a layer on top of some dirt. You can see the pile of dirt in the back of the yard. I don't think the petitioner is operating in good faith. Point of clarification, I'm at McCarthy. This is a single-family home, so the amount of cars at a single-family home, I don't know why there would be up to nine cars needed. When I was there, there were cars in the lot, there were cars in front of the house, there were cars in the driveway, and there was a car on the grass. So, I don't think we're operating in good faith. It was good that the DPD staff caught this, and I, in good conscience, can't vote to approve anything close to what's in front of us now. So, I will be voting to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I have to agree with Mr. Callahan, Mr. Hovey. Looking at the, it looks like a commercial parking lot right now. I mean, it's concerning that you have other cars parked up in someone else's house. That seems really dangerous to me. And then listening to all the other comments from DPW and stuff like that, that didn't meet any of these contingents, you know, I just, it's very confusing. But I can't vote in favor for this either, the way that it is presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the gentleman who is doing the interpretation, can you ask the applicant if they reviewed the comments from, from the Department of Planning and Development?
My apologies. I was translating it to Mr. Borba. Can you repeat the question, please?
I said, did the applicant get a chance to review the comments from the Department of Planning and Development?
Yes, he said he did. In regards to the trees, he hasn't gotten to that part yet because he was seeding grass first before he could get to the other, the conditions, such as planting the trees.
Okay. I want to make sure that the applicant understands why this board feels that they have not been operating in good faith because nothing has been met and nothing else has been done. If we look at from 2022 to now, it just does not make sense, as my fellow board member says. The proposed planning, parking, 50 by 30 for a resident, two-car garage, it just does not make sense. And I want to make sure that, I am not in favor of this as well, but they have to understand why, and that's what I'm concerned about, that they don't, because from 2022 to now, it came back because it was found out of compliance, not because you're trying to make any improvements. And that's my concern. It's not in good faith. So, I want to make sure that they understand that.
Okay, yes, I'm going to translate.
Okay. Peter, I don't know if this applicant has, I mean, again, the fact that the board feels that this hasn't met any of our standards, I don't know what recourse potentially, like if they can resubmit or something of that nature, just.
So, what he's actually here for is he was, because the original variance is now null and void because the conditions weren't met, he was ticketed for having this parking area. So, if the board were to deny the application, he would just have to get rid of the parking area and pay the ticket. Would be the next steps for, for him.
Okay. And then they can resubmit if needed?
Yeah, they could resubmit, or if the board chose to continue, and they could resubmit at that point. I would think if it was denied, that might be the, the end of this proposed parking area.
Well, okay. Well, in that case, I'll be voting in denial because, yeah, it does not meet the standards of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for the petitioner. I'd like to know for the record what the reason for this additional parking request is for.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a large, it's a large home. He has roommates, and so he needed the additional parking space for, for also whenever he has visitors, he could have them park the street as well. He's a part of the church, a church community, and he is constantly receiving visitors. So, that, that was part of his concern, that maybe he could have cars off-street and not disturb the peace around.
So, is your answer, the need is for residence, for residents, residential parking?
And, and, and visitors, yeah.
And, and the two-family home, correct?
That, that's, that's correct.
How many bedrooms?
Three, three.
Three in each unit?
It's a three-story, it's a three-story.
It's a single-family home.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's, it's.
I don't know why there's that.
Okay, that's my error. It's not.
No, it's, it's a single-family home.
I mean, it's certainly large enough to be a.
Yeah, it is, but.
So, it's a single-family home containing three bedrooms?
Correct.
And you require how many parking spaces?
He would like three, four parking spaces. Three, three, three would be ideas.
Three more. What happened to your original plan to use these additional spaces for commercial vehicles?
No, he's not going to do that anymore. He understands it's, it was, it was not allowed so that he's not going to have commercial vehicles parked out there.
No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Sir, you know, I think for me, this, this request you're asking is, again, I think if you came ahead of time and told us, like, you know, after the build or during the process, like, hey, you know what, we tried to make it happen, it didn't work, we need more parking, we need more, more spaces, you know, come back before the board, you know, go through, go through planning, submit an application, all that. So, you're only, you're only here because the enforcement department in the city, you know, essentially saw this violation, and they asked you what's going on, and then... So, so to me, it's very deceiving, lack of a better word I have, I guess. And, you know, and again, to my colleague's point, not in good faith. I like to think we're very reasonable, very flexible, I think, you know, very understanding of the needs and, you know, we, of everyone, and we look at every petition on its merits and on the need of the petitioner and how it affects the neighborhood. But again, you know, I think the ask, the request that you're asking is beyond what, what is allowed in zoning in terms of parking and allowed for a single residential dwelling unit. So, for me, it'd be hard for me to support this. So, again, I think, so the only, the only way to move forward here is we'll vote, have a vote tonight if you and your client would like that. Or the other option is you can withdraw without prejudice, you know, but those are, those are really the only options that I see, at least.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain it to him. If he decides to withdraw, will he be able to work on the conditions of the previous variance and be able to keep the...
So, so you would have to come in compliance, and Mr. Katrumbis, Ms. Callahan, Mr. McCarthy, correct me, you have to come in compliance with the original approval?
Yeah, and so, one of those conditions is submitting a site plan, like, to be approved by DPD, and we would not approve that site plan. It's obvious that they don't need that. They're not going to just park three cars there. It's a very large parking area. They already are, you know, parking more cars than that, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Katrumbis. Mr. McCarthy, did you have something you want to add, sir?
I just wanted to mention that if we were, if you were to withdraw without prejudice, you would be able to work on a revised variance plan right away. You wouldn't have to wait two years, I believe, is the, if you, if you're denied, you have to wait at least two years before you can come back and ask for the curb cut variance especially. But what, what I would suggest is that you withdraw without prejudice, but work with DPD on what the requirements they need to see on the site plan, and then develop a site plan to submit that would meet the requirements, because it seems like it's not clear to you what's being required, and you need some direction, and I think DPD would be able to provide that.
I'm translating as you go. Thank you very much. Just to be clear, so would that, the contact of that would be Mr. Peter?
Yes, I'd be the contact, and I want to note for the applicant, the zoning enforcement officer's on the Zoom with me right now and has been texting me. He'd have to move fairly quickly on the plan because he's already been issued a warning, and so they would move to like a monetary fine soon.
If, if he decides to withdraw, will he be able to work on the conditions of the previous variance and, and be able to keep the, the?
So, so you would have to come in compliance, and Mr. Katrumbis, Mr. Callahan, Mr. McCarthy, correct me, you, you have to come in compliance with the original approval?
Yeah, and so one of those conditions is submitting a site plan, like, to be approved by DPD, and we would not approve that site plan. It's obvious that they don't need that, they're not going to just park three cars there. It's a very large parking area, they already are, you know, parking more cars than that, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Katrumbis. Mr. McCarthy, did you have something you want to add, sir?
I, I just wanted to mention that if we were, if you were to withdraw without prejudice, you would be able to work on a revised variance plan right away. You wouldn't have to wait two years, I believe, is the, if you, if you're denied, you have to wait at least two years before you can come back and ask for the curb cut variance especially. But what, what I would suggest is that you withdraw without prejudice, but work with DPD on what the requirements they need to see on the site plan, and then develop a site plan to submit that would meet the requirements. Because it seems like it's not clear to you what's being required, and you need some direction, and I think DPD would be able to provide that.
I, I'm translating as, as you go. Thank you very much. Just to be clear, so would that, the contact with that would be Mr. Peter?
Yes, I'd be the contact, and I want to note for the applicant, the zoning enforcement officer's on the Zoom with me right now and has been texting me. He'd have to move fairly quickly on the plan because he's already been issued a warning, and so they would move to like a monetary fine soon.
Okay. 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 Okay, he's okay. He's okay with that. He would be okay with that. He, he would, he would be working on it right away.
All right. So just, so we're all on the same page. You're gonna, you're requesting to withdraw without prejudice, you're gonna work with DPD on, on a plan that meets all the criteria and, and all the requirements that we talked about, and then you're gonna come back. That, that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, he's, is, yes, he's gonna work on meeting all the, the criteria, and, and he's gonna make sure to work with Sir Peter and, and come back, yes.
I also just want to note for the applicant, if it's withdrawn without prejudice, we will have to like run the legal ad and the abutters notice again because it would be a new public hearing. I know that can kind of be a hefty expense, so I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. I just want, I just want to clarify one thing. So the prior, again, the prior granting of the variance because they didn't comply with the conditions, it's now lapsed, it's gone, right? Or is it still there? Because it is registered, it is, it is recorded with Registry of Deeds. So what's the, what's the, where are we in that, in that portion?
So, the variance.
They didn't comply with what we asked.
Right, and it's been more than.
It's been more than a year.
Year since it was issued.
But I think legally, because they recorded it with the Registry of Deeds, that effectuates it. But it's not, but, you know, but since they didn't meet the conditions, I mean, it's kind of a, kind of a catch-22 here, so I'm kind of confused.
My understanding was that it was invalid. That was only after speaking with the senior planner and the assistant, the associate planner. I didn't check with any of the lawyers upstairs, but that was kind of our, our group read of what was going on there.
All right. Because that, that just, that just opens up a whole new thing where people are, we put conditions on things and people record them, and then the conditions mean nothing. So, sir, my suggestion again, my suggestion would be, yes, what the chairman suggested as far as the withdrawal, and, but you really, really need to work with DPD on this. And I'll tell you right now, that, that car should be, should not be parked on the green space.
Oh, he, he's upset. He's, he's gonna make sure it's, it's, it comes off.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, sir. So, so we're gonna move forward with a vote to withdraw without prejudice, you're gonna work with DPD, and, and again, to my colleagues, the vice chairman and Mr. Callahan, Mr. McCarthy, everyone's comments here, start to rectify whatever the issue is right now in terms of like the parking and the boat and all the green space, rectify that right away and then work with DPD. And then we, we submit a package that's more appropriate, and we'll see how it goes from
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, of course. Any other comments by my colleagues before we move forward with, with a motion here? Seeing none, carry motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-5 for variances at 85 Seneca Street to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Prokop. Carry motion, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Hovey.
Deny.
Member Nickerson.
Approved with, without prejudice.
All right, sir, your request for approval for withdrawal has been approved. We'll see you down the line in the future. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda, on the new business, we have Petition is a variance. The applicant is Floamun Salve. Property located at 123 Varnum Ave. The applicant is applying to the zoning board of appeal seeking variance approval to construct in addition to the rear of their house at 123 Varnum Ave. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval under section 5.1 for the maximum for racial requirements and any other relief required in the law zone ordinance.
They didn't ask to continue, but they're also not here or on Zoom, so.
So nobody, nobody else on Zoom?
Uh, no.
Okay, so no one's here, no one's on Zoom, I didn't see anything. I don't know if any, my colleagues got any communication from anybody? I did not. Sometimes people reach out to me directly, but I didn't see anything on my email or my phone.
It, it was a similar situation to the last applicant where somebody was translating on behalf for the applicant, so I'm not sure if maybe something got lost, but.
What, what's the, will the board, do, do you want to continue the matter?
I, I would think that continuing it would be appropriate if we can also find a way to reach out to them to make it clear that if they get continued by us, if that happens, that they must show up at the next hearing. Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I agree. I would probably, under the circumstances, I think we only, this only happened once, once before, and I think we did continue it because of possible lack of, well, whatever.
Communication errors or something?
Yeah, something.
Understanding, communication, understanding?
I guess to that effect, though, Peter, please make sure it's expressed to the applicant whenever the next hearing is that they have to show up. Otherwise, if it's the same thing, then I don't think we'll take too kindly the next time, so.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I, I would agree, you know, mistakes happen, maybe there's a barrier of communication or understanding or whatever it may be. And to the vice chairman's point, I think if, if we continue the matter to the next open agenda item and is not here, I think, you know, it, it won't be looked upon favorably. It's, it's very unprofessional and rude just to not show up, in my, my opinion. I think my colleague share a similar sentiment, so. Any other comments before we move forward with the motion to continue the matter?
What meeting would we be looking at if we were to?
And we could push this way out if, if there's nothing open till whenever.
Uh, no, April 8th would.
April 8th. Well, they're unlocked, our next one's open. If there's no further comments, carry the motion to continue the matter, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-2 for variance at 123 Varnum Ave to be continued to April 8th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter, second by Mr. Hovey. Carry motion, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance to April 8th.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 8th, 2024.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 8th, 2024.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to April 8th, 2024.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, the matter's been continued. Just a reminder, this, this is the notice that the matter has been continued, there will be no other notice regarding this petition. Moving on to other business, we have minutes for approval for February 26, 2024. Any comments, questions, revisions, updates by my colleagues? Seeing none, carry motion to approve the minutes, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA, I'm sorry, to approve the meeting minutes for February 26, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes, second by Mr. Prokop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Any comments before we move forward to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Brier, yes, the floor is yours, sir.
I'd like to record to reflect that I will not be in attendance at the March 25th meeting.
Thank, thank you for that information. It's appreciated, Mr. Brier. Any other comments by my colleagues?
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Agreed. Second, Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir.
And if I could just remind people, I think today is the last day we can send comments in for the law forward plan, and I know there's time left in the day. And I think it's important for us to recognize the great work done by staff to create this document, and I want to just thank the planning department for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Thank you for that. That's just a good reminder. Thank you, sir. Any other comments before we move forward with a motion to adjourn? Seeing none, carry motion to adjourn, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn, second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night, folks.